I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's school board candidate forum. My name is Lucy Rosso and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Aubrey Bitt and I'm also a sophomore.
And my name is Legend and I'm also a sophomore.
We are happy to have all of you here and we're happy to have the candidates here. The forum will be live shared on our Mora District YouTube page. Tonight, all candidates will answer the same questions. The questions have been prepared in advance by student council members. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Legend will raise his hand when the one-minute mark has been reached. Please introduce yourself and tell us what motivated you to run for the school board. We will start with Steve.
So, the thing that motivated me to run for school board was the people in the community. When I heard of there was three candidates at worst knocking down, even talking to some of those candidates, talking to my wife, talking to my kids, talking to my neighborhood kids in my neighborhood, the parents in my neighborhood, some of the kids at school, some of the preschoolers that have a pretty big influence on my children. And I had a lot of people in my ear telling me, "You can be good at this and this is something you should do." So, that's why I made that decision to run.
My name is Erica Yaski. It's nice to meet everybody. I have quite a few reasons why I was motivated to run for school board. I think the main reason is my kids. I want to be able to be there for them and support them in a different way than just being their parents. And not just my kids, but all of our, all the kids in our community. I also know that I can be supportive of those kids and supportive of the staff and our administration as well. I also grew up here. I've been, I've lived here since 99. I think under the 20-year mark, you get to say that you're for Mora, but I'm not really sure. So, I think I can say I'm for Mora. But I also am super motivated just to maintain these great schools and assist in maintaining the great schools that we have. And trying to bring in others. I think, you know, that's my view. Thank you.
I'm Dakota Hallbricht. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. What motivated me to run for the school board is my sense of community involvement, being in the Mora Alliance Club and also being a member of the Mora Public Sonic Lodge. I knew that I needed to use the experiences that I gained from that to help with the school board as well because, as we know, strong schools relate with strong communities. The other thing too, being born and raised in Mora and going through the school system, grades taking from 12, I can relate with all the district works and how we have such a great school system. And I want to maintain that and keep it going for the years to come. The other thing too is I want, I wanted to bring more balance and parity within extracurriculars. There's so much focus on athletics and not a lot on arts. I want to bring more awareness to that. So, that's really what I got for the motivation piece of it.
My name is Ryan Hanley. Yeah, so I think, I mean, obviously, like, a lot of, I imagine, my kids also motivate me to run for school board. My kids will be entering the school district in the next year. So, I mean, that's obviously on my mind to make sure the school, I think, needs to be quality as I think it is now. And also, I think the public school system is the foundation of our society. Without it, we don't know where we'll be. So, I think it's important that we, we help maintain that as best we can. It's the least I can do to sort of do my part.
Hi, I'm Ken. Can you hear me? I'm Ken Napson. What I really wanted, my wife and I were talking and she says, "You got all these ideas. Why don't you run for school board?" So, I said, "Yeah, I will." So, I've been around Mora my whole life and there's been some rocky times and some good times. And one of my motivations is to make sure that the school, the kids are safe and that they get a quality education and the support they need. Also, with faculty, they need support too from everyone. And I'd like to bring the community back together because I know with, over the last 10 years, with everything that's went on, the community's been divided and we need the community to back the kids. Whether you agree to everything or you don't, we need to come to a compromise and put the kids first and bring the community back together again so they have the support they need for their future.
My name is Amy Schultz and I've been wanting to run for school board for quite some time. I wanted to wait until I was at a point in my life where I had enough experience in my life that I felt that I could do a good job, not just experience with life, but also experience within the schools. I, I, my kids are getting older right now. There are still three of them in high school right now. But I have more time now to devote to serving the school and to serve the school district. I feel education is extremely important. It's something that I'm pretty passionate about is teaching kids. I've been volunteering in the community for a long time and I've taught a lot of different things, from preschoolers at MOPPS to Cub Scouts, to leading at church and teaching there for the kids, fast-tracking the sports, for skiing. I just really love teaching kids. It's something that's important to me. So, I thought I could serve on the school board as a way of serving the schools.
What do you think is the relationship between curricular and extracurricular activities? Do you have any goals for future extracurricular programming at Mora schools? Start with Erin.
I think there should be a direct relationship between extracurricular activities and curricular activities. I think that kids should, who are participating in extracurricular activities, should also do well in school. I think they should go hand-in-hand. I think that if you need to spend more time working on your school work, that you can take that away from your sporting or events or anything at your school. I think it's important to support all extracurricular activities, not even, not only just sports, but the drama and music programs as well. I think that there's a lot of wonderful kids and wonderfully talented kids in our district and supporting all of them in their extracurricular activities is something that I would like to do.
Yeah. With the extracurriculars, there is a tight relationship, both with curriculars and extracurriculars in the classroom and outside. They have a lot of real-life applications. Especially with extracurriculars, you learn how to work as a team. You learn how to lead a team. You learn how to work with people that you may not necessarily get along with, but you have to learn how to work with them, just like you do in the adult world. As for the future goals, like I mentioned earlier, I want to bring more, more balance within extracurriculars. They should always be supported. They should be supported equally. I don't think one should be supported more than other. Again, not saying one is more important. Football is not more important than theater or tennis is not more important than art and painting, things like that. They need to be supported equally. They need to be promoted equally.
Yeah, I think it's, it's obviously important that we support all extracurricular activities. I mean, it's good to get our kids involved in really what they're passionate about. You know, find passions for later life or enjoy things that they can only do now, right? Like, I don't play football anymore, right? That was great that I got to do that. But also, it's a lot of things, right? It's also important that we have, we offer a wide variety of stuff and obviously, like, math and the United States, right? So, I mean, anyway, I think we do a good job offering a lot of different things, especially constantly for extracurriculars. But yeah, it's important that we, that we don't, you know, put too much focus on one thing versus the other, you know? I always felt like, especially when I was a student, that they were supported whether, you know, I was in theater and into football. I didn't feel like that was an issue really, at least, but...
Well, I think education's our top priority here. Extracurriculars are, are good, are very good things. You have team bonding. You have leadership roles within. It's great for socializing, but I believe that the top priority for Mora School District is the education of our kids and making sure that we give them all the tools they need to succeed in life, which extracurriculars are part of it, but I believe their education should come first.
Extracurricular activities, I think, go hand-in-hand with curricular activities. The extracurricular activities have an ability to enhance the curricular activities. It provides a lot more time for the kids to develop their social skills and their leadership skills. These are things that I feel are incredibly important right now in our culture and in our world is to develop those skills of face-to-face interacting, leading, and those things are really important. In the future, part of the question written here was, "In the future, what are your goals for future extracurricular activities?" I don't have any exact goals except for, I think it's really important that we pay attention to changing times. So, I did like how, within the past couple of years, they started a gaming club, which as a mom, I think gaming is not important except for, it's really important to the kids and they're able to develop social relationships that way.
So, extracurricular activities, again, like everybody else has said, I think they go hand-in-hand with the classroom. As a coach and coaching my son and coaching other students, it translates directly by you teaching kids how to succeed, how to work together. The other thing is when they fail, it teaches them how to get back up. It teaches them, you know, how to keep trying. Even if they're having a difficulty, the fact that they have to work harder and harder to get there, maybe they're not as good. Maybe they need to spend more time on, whether it's football or mathematics or reading or music or art. And I, I think that's how extracurriculars tie into it. As far as expanding, I have my personal family. I have one kid who's a phenomenal athlete and I have another kid who's a phenomenal artist. And so, I see both sides of it and the importance of both things. Expanding it, I think, is important to give the kids whatever opportunity you can and open ideas that they have.
What leadership positions and/or experiences have you had? Start with Kripa.
So, I've had several leadership positions. Mainly at my place of employment, I work at Coburn's here at Mora. Currently, I'm the produce department manager, so I run a staff of approximately 11 people and responsible for produce for all departments there. Had several different other department manager jobs there, such as for those grocery. And also, am the club secretary for the Mora Alliance. That sounds like a leadership position, but there's a lot of record-keeping and a lot of correspondence that gets involved with that and a lot of organization within the club so we can maintain our functionality. The other thing that I also have had is a bit of a coach, part-time for Mora Boys Tennis and also helped out with the Mora Theater Program while I was in school and also after I was in school as well.
Yeah, I would say my, my most relevant sort of leadership experiences come from my, my employment as well. I work for actually a consulting firm. So, I mean, a lot of this, you know, like, making a team and donating work to make sure our clients are happy and working overtime, things like that. You know, being in charge of a handful of owner analysts to make sure homework is done on time and stuff. So, quite a, one of the most recent, I almost said leadership experience before that. I mean, I was involved in a bunch of clubs and stuff in college and I was like a boy scout in high school and I was a little scout. So, you know, there's obviously a lot of leadership opportunities there, you know, as Ken hears you, I suppose. I did have a close my, my son's team ball briefly this past summer a little bit. So, I think, I actually have a lean, but in the school board, it's about collaboration. I think that's actually what we're talking about, school board members, how to go to collaborative letters. I think I can do that well.
One of the, one of the rules I've had is I've been on the Knight Lake Township Board for nine years now, which it seems small, but it's very beneficial to be serving on a board. You go through, you have budget issues, you have policy issues. So, I've had quite a bit of experience dealing with both of them things, conflict resolutions with some of the citizens, trying to figure out what's best for everyone in the community of Knight Lake Township. So, that's one and it gets to be, it's been a very eye-opening experience for how things work in compromise with other individuals that are supervisors on the board and doing what's best for the community at that. So, thank you.
Currently, I'm serving as a treasurer on an international nonprofit. We're raising money for, I'm working with a hospital in Kenya, so there's meetings and things like that. The other one, in the past, I coordinated mothers of preschoolers where you had speakers and meetings and things like that. Did that for six years. And then, for like eight years or so, I coordinated the preschool program. So, I was planning the curriculum and working with that. I am a licensed foster parent, so I've worked with many different families within the community. Well, not many, but different families within the community. What I mean by many is probably many different personality types and people who have different beliefs. I've also led groups at church and led other kids' groups in the community as well with Cub Scouts and worked with the other leaders and tried to organize things.
Well, my experiences with leadership started straight out of high school with the military. I'm a veteran in the United States Air Force. Decisions that you made on a daily basis can be life and death. Grace was there in church. I was on the board and actually chaired the board when we were going through a transition period. It's one of the toughest things I had to do where you're making decisions that affect people's lives and they're not always popular decisions and you got to learn how to live with that. I've also worked in law enforcement for the past 17 years. I've been a case mender. I've been an officer. I currently work in federal law enforcement at the prison in Sandstone. I, like I said, I started off as an officer there, working special investigations. And I currently teach cognitive behavioral therapy, they admit, where you're leading, being an example to others, teaching them how to be better fathers, brothers, husbands, and just be better people overall. I think that's been an important thing to me as I've grown. I don't know. Thank you.
So, currently, I am the adult health supervisor at County County Community Health. So, I supervise eight nurses and eight home health aides. And we're not fully staffed, so it can be a couple more. So, it is a big group of people. Within that day-to-day stuff, you know, you're helping solve problems with not only our clients, but our staff as well. We focus a lot on supporting our elderly and helping them remain in their homes as long as they're safe. So, we do a lot with elderly population and I love helping my nurses help our population, our aging population. It's such a great job and it's so rewarding being able to help people stay in their homes that think, "Oh, gosh, I have to move out because I can't, you know, do X, Y, Z," or whatever. But really, we give them the tools to support themselves in home, in their home, and it's a wonderful thing. Also, I have to give props to Amy because I remember too that I was on the MOPPS Board as well and that's actually how I met Amy. Keep going, that'll stop.
How have you been involved in Mora Public Schools in recent years, starting with Grant?
Yeah, well, I moved away after high school to go to college and worked for a few years, suddenly I'm back in town a few years since I have had lots of degrees recently, right? So, I'm at home and in a way. But now that I'm back, I try to get involved if I can. I got help with doing like the set and stuff for the musical recently. Did this past fall, the Junior High Musical and English for before as well. Working with COVID, some of the last couple of years, I have to, have to get involved with all that, but...
Yeah, I, my daughter is a first year in college and I have a son in fourth grade and I haven't had a whole lot of volunteer involvement, but involved in going to all their activities in school, supporting fundraisers and anything in any way. So, that has been my main contribution in the last for Mora Public Schools.
I've been involved in the schools because, for a lot of reasons, but I have five children that have gone through, graduated or are in school. One of them was in the special ed department or end, so I have a lot of experience with that. Also, I was participating in Mora PTO for a little bit, a very small amount of time, a couple of years ago. And then, I participated pretty strongly with OES when we were building the new school. I felt it was very important to have new facilities and so, I was very involved with that. And then, I volunteered in the classrooms, working in the elementary classrooms. I've also substituted in the classrooms. I started doing that when COVID happened because I really feel strongly that education in school is important, not online. So, and then, I've substituted a little bit this year as well.
How I've been in Mora Public Schools, one of the, I've spent many years on the Blue Circle helping out with the fundraising, especially with the golf tournament. We actually moved to Mora because of the school district. My wife is a teacher and we didn't live in the community at the time. She wasn't teaching here at the time. And one of the reasons we moved here was because of the school district in the community. I coach youth sports. Another thing that I do is when, when I'm time, I volunteer, whether it's with fundraising or with coaching or with anything another teacher asks me to handle about, I'm either the first one to say, "Yeah, I got you." So, that's how I've been involved with the school and I look forward to continuing that.
So, my main involvement with Mora Schools in the recent years has been in attending sporting events and the musical programs that are put on by the school with having a sixth grader and a tenth grader. We do quite a full schedule in the evenings with their sports and their music programs. Also, I coached T-Ball. I know that that's not like Mora Public Schools, but it is our community and it was such a fun experience. I think you learn a lot from preschoolers, that's for sure. Also, previously to working, you know, full-time days, I did volunteer in my daughter's classroom, which discipline, I'm saying it was quite well, it wasn't that present. But I loved those kids. They just have so much to teach you and it was so fun seeing their smiles and how happy they were to have you come, three of them alone or something small. I'm thankful that I have a three-year-old that will be coming through the schools again so I can take that time to do that again and spend time with him in the classroom as well.
So, as I mentioned before, after I graduated, I helped out coaching boys tennis and also working with theater and drama students. After, after I would get off shift at the store, I would come right to the high school and I would help these theater students, you know, sharpen their character, help mentor them and help them to become better people and better actors and actresses. And to see the development within those students was a rewarding experience. I loved every minute of it. I've also helped build set crews, or helped set, set crews, filming sets for different productions, also getting set up for, for music concerts and things like that. I've always been a person that's willing to help out no matter how much I have on my plate because when there's, when there's a goal that's looking to be accomplished bigger than the goal that I have, I'm very involved. I want to see, see that goal come to success.
What, if any, changes do you feel are necessary for public education in Mora? And what would you do to help make these changes and elect it to be a homeschool board? Start with Ken.
Well, I believe that the curriculum in Mora is fairly good right now. I believe that we should go through and update and revise policies. I don't know how often they're done, but times are changing and things are different. And the one, one other thing that I would like is, it's mainly directed toward senior high, is exposing students to different career paths, whether it be going to work or if they want to go to a bobotech. Exposing the older class that there are tons of things they can do out there and there's a lot of options that they can pursue in their life. So, that's the main thing for the older kids. And for the under, I would say, all throughout is teaching them, which I know we do, but having respect, responsibility and accountability and having accountability from everybody from the school board to the parents and everybody in between.
I'd like to see teachers feeling more supported and respected by people in the community and by their students. I also would like to see students and the community taking more pride in their education and in their school. I think you can educate students a lot better if they are taking pride in their education. I also think that we need to have more transparency than there already is with what the classes are being taught, like what we're teaching in the classes. I think this will help build trust within the community. And yes, I think that's important. And I think by setting policies and setting up different procedures, this is how you can accomplish some of these things. And I think by setting policies and setting up different procedures, this is how you can accomplish some of these things.
So, one of, well, I got about three things written down that I really want to focus on. One of the things that I think is important based for a better classroom is the teacher-student ratios along with fair access when needed. I think that's an important part that gets overlooked sometimes. I understand that there's fluctuation in the population and sometimes we're going to be short staff. The other part of that is keeping quality teachers. I've seen mass exodus from schools around here from teachers and admin. And we have some great teachers here and we've lost some good teachers here too. I think it's very important that we do what we can to keep them around. The other emphasis I'm kind of with Ken, I'm just one where I think there needs to be more emphasis placed on trades, exposing them to different career paths. A lot of times I'm walking into a prison, I'm like, man, some days I wish I would have been a carpenter or a plumber and I could make more money and I've not put myself ever, so I think that's an important thing too.
So I think our Mora public education as a whole is, is great. I don't think that there's anything directly that I would jump in and say this needs to be changed. I think it's important too that we're listening to teachers and staff and administration and making sure that our teachers are really supported. I think that is super important. Coming from a county employee, it's not, I mean, all of our income is funded by the county and it is very similar to teachers. They don't make a ton of money. And if you can support your staff, if you can support the administration and make everybody feel like they're doing a good job and reminding them they're doing a good job. I think it goes a lot, it goes a long way. I also, I also really do think that we do need to have an emphasis on the trades as well. And I'm thankful that, actually on Friday, that the tenth graders are going to their day of fond learning by a bunch of different occupations.
Well, as the other candidates have mentioned, I'm going to back up what they're saying. There does need to be more awareness when it comes to trade and vocational programs. Not just the going to a four, going to a four-year.
We can still hear you pretty good.
Okay, well, oh, there it goes. Say it, more emphasis on trades vocational programs, not just the four-year college route. The other thing too is making sure that our, our teachers and our staff and everybody from the custodian who just started this first day to the principal that's been there for twenty years, making sure that they're supported, making sure that their concerns are addressed and their concerns are resolved as quickly as possible. So that we can have the retention that we need so our district can remain strong and our students can be served as best as possible.
Yeah, I mean similarly, I don't think there's any large drastic changes our school district is to open, right? Something I've been thinking a lot about recently is, it's important that, I mean, the school's goal is right to give the students the best quality education we can to be successful adults, right? And I think it'd be interesting if we could track somehow post-high school success, right? So I mean, if we, if there's a student that we steer towards four-year college and, you know, they're there a year or two, they don't like it and they drop out, right, and now they spent, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollars in Mora for nothing really helpful, right? Is there something that we should have done to student in a different way, right? Like maybe that student was more, would have succeeded better in a trade or a tech school or, or something else, right? So I think it's important to also look backwards, right, at what we've done in the past, right, if something working, change or vice versa. So if there's a way to track, I think that would be, that can be really beneficial to post-high school successes.
What benefits and challenges do you think Mora will experience as a result of the new high school? And what do you want to prioritize in the new building? Start with Amy.
I think there are a lot of benefits with the new facilities. For the students, I think there's cleaner air, there's better facilities, there's safety, there's a lot of opportunity in a newer building. For the community, I think that a newer school will draw more professionals. So you'll get better doctors or better professionals, other professionals in the community to take care of us as we're getting older. And I also think that there's some, possibly some negative things that we can have for the students. Like there's a disruption to the flow of things, there's going to be that adjustment that we're going to have to go through. Also, for the community, there's the negatives of the higher tax burden. And that is just, I mean, it costs money, you have to invest in education if you want to see changes in it. So, but that is a negative for some people. And then the, I guess, I'd like to see prioritized using the building completely and maintaining the facilities the best we can.
To me, I think one of the big benefits is going to be technology, infrastructure, seeing some of the classrooms, the things that they have available in classrooms nowadays to help the kids learn. I think it's more another thing, and I remember hearing that from high school kids taking their ACTs, SATs and it's ninety degrees in the room. I remember taking my ACTs and I was in a pretty comfortable place. I can't imagine the stress that they must be under on top of that. I think they have that comfort and being able to, to have the best learning experience possible is important. And I think that's going to come with the new school. The other thing is, we talked about access points and entry points in the old school. I think it's going to be a safer environment for them to learn in overall. Some of the challenges I think is going to be budgeting, what if, what if this happens, what if that happens? Unforeseen things that occur. Are we going to have enough in the budget to work out those kinks? And, and without having to do a lot of, or put a tax burden on the people of the community?
So I think there are quite a few benefits to having a new school. We, you get this big beautiful building, right? I mean, it's absolutely phenomenal when you look at the pictures and the actual building itself. I really liked what Steve said about having the comfort of the temperature. I just remember being in the math hallway and you never know if it's going to be sixty or ninety, so you have to just dress in layers like a true Minnesotan. I also think that there's going to be a lot of challenges, having, you know, potential issues with a brand-new building. It doesn't, even if you do build something brand-new from the ground, you never know what could happen. Having that availability to fix it is important as well. Student-specific, I think there's going to be some targeted challenges at first, so I'll be interested to see how that goes. I also think that, oh, one more benefit I wanted to say too is having a place for them to just study and be together and not just stuck in a hallway and, you know, in just such a small space. I really like how they have areas to sit in, in my priority because my time out is safety.
So I think there's going to be, there's going to be a lot more benefits than there will be challenges. A benefit is going to be, there's going to be a lot of districts around us that are going to be jealous because of this brand-new, shiny school that we have. And they're going to want to, to know how we did it and to see what we're doing that makes more public schools, you know, what it is. Something that I'm, there's two things I really want to see prioritized. One is, of course, the school security because I want our students to be, to be safe and not have to worry about, you know, catastrophic events happening. The other thing too is I want there, I want there to be a space within, within the school that if there is a mental health situation or a mental health crisis that they can, they can go to this space and it can be, you know, the problem can be taken care of and that they can, they're able to remove themselves and then return back to their classroom.
Yeah, so I think, right when I was, when I was in my last couple of years in high school, writing this question, I knew it was going to start to come up. So at the time I did a lot of research on, like, the benefits of the school and stuff like that. I ended up writing on that in the paper at the time. So there's a lot of research about, like, you know, like, I know you mentioned like temperature in the classroom or light or things like that that have a pretty much impact on, like, student success. So, you know, obviously there will be huge educational benefits, right? Just, just of being in a different space, right, a better, more controlled space. And obviously, like, the security better here, I mean, there's a million ways in the high school how, I can't imagine being all secure at the same time, right? All the time, right? It's more to handle than it should be probably. In terms of, like, priorities, I mean, going forward, right, all the big giant decisions have been made, right? At this point, it's going to be like budget constraints and things like that. Like what small things need to be cut or changed or whatever as we go forward. I didn't, the thing is really important that we just keep focused that we want to maintain things that are pertinent to student success and maybe teachers' jobs easier.
Well, I think the, the main benefit will be that a lot of the issues at the old school, the classroom sizes, they're more adequate, the technology's more adequate and that all the issues we had at the other schools should be resolved with the new school being there. I believe the challenges are, yes, the kids are going to have to learn to navigate through right away. You're going to have to work out the kinks. The custodians and the maintenance people are going to have new challenges with new equipment, new different things. And also, it is going to be a matter of how we're going to budget to maintain this building so that in year thirty-one, when the bond is paid for, that the school is in as good of condition as it is now so that we don't have to have another referendum or another levy. So it's a budgeting concern and we're going to have to look for the future. We're going to have to look, you know, outside the box and come up with a plan that this investment that the community's made is still there.
What are your views on students having off-campus privileges in the new high school? Like open lunch, leaving for study hall slash PSEO, et cetera? Start with Steve.
I'm okay with it. I had, growing up, again, it teaches you responsibility, how to budget your time, how to use it effectively. One of the concerns I do is having on a campus without elementary school and having the new school right there is I didn't know it was exactly driving the speed limit when I was in high school. So I have that self-relation and concern, especially having school with the younger kids around.
I also like Steve, I'm very open to having the open campus lunch or off-campus lunch, however you want to say it. I, I, we had a lot of fun just during our lunch hour and we also learned a lot too. We learned how to manage our time, manage our money. Well, not clearly manage money, but you know, you have five dollars or you're going to go for lunch. Also, I think that it teaches you too, just that respect of the community. I remember going into a hall drug and just, you know, you have to, you learn how to deal with store owners and things like that. And I just think it's a really good thing for our kids to have and give them that responsibility. Now, also on the other side too, I feel like if they take advantage of it or if there is a reason why it should be taken away, that they are held accountable if they're not being viewed properly out in public and, you know, the school finds out about it and their misbehaving. Then I definitely think that, yes, it is something that can be taken away. But generally speaking, I think that open, open campus lunch can be earned and definitely can be used as a benefit to them.
So I will for it. You know, however, we need to make sure that the students know it is a privilege. It's not necessarily a right. You know, they need to make sure that their grades are in good standing, their attendance record is in good standing. They don't have any frequent or major disciplinary issues, both within the school and out in the community. If they want to go for a lunch, you know, as long as they meet those criteria, they should be able to, like the other candidates have said, they have learned how to manage their time or how to manage their money, which will help them prepare for when they go out into the adult world. They're, they have jobs, they go for lunch with coworkers, things like that. They also have to learn how to budget their, their time and money accordingly. And like Steve said too, with elementary students being around, they have to make sure they're exercising caution. Because, of course, we don't want something, something bad to happen. We want to make sure that our students can get out and have that time, but also make sure that they're doing it safely and properly.
I think that is, is something that can be beneficial to students, right? I mean, I, I think we should, we should trust our students to be able to handle that sort of responsibility, right? I mean, I just think if they're doing something they shouldn't be, that, I mean, as others have alluded to, that it's a provision. Should perhaps be taken away for some students if they can't handle it. But, I'll just sell there. Yeah, so I think it's important that we give them the opportunity at least for the math. So I don't, I don't have a exact problem with it. I know it can be at times a liability for the school, but we don't know where students are exactly and things of that nature. So it's important to balance, balance those things as well.
Yeah, I guess I don't really see any major issues with it of having students go out other than now that it is, there'll be way more students on this campus. There'll be younger kids, which will be a safety issue. And as long as the students are respectful and they're accountable for their actions when they're leaving the school, I don't see any problems with it.
Open lunch does provide more of a safety concern as far as people, more people coming in and going same as like the PSEO and all of that. It is something that we need to think about. However, with that being said, we're growing these students into adulthood and they need to have responsibilities to manage their time and to, you know, just, I, I think we should give them, them the responsibility for open lunch. I think we're great to have people coming in going anyways for PSEO and appointments and things like that. But it is something we should keep in mind that the more times people come and go, the more chances that somebody comes into the building. It's just something for us to, to think about.
If elected to the board, how would you involve students in future decision-making? Start with you.
So honestly, I feel as it is very important just to be having those conversations with our kids. I have a benefit of having a fifteen-year-old and an eleven-year-old. I have the opportunity to be around a lot of kids to hear their perspective on, you know, certain issues. They're accessible if I need, if I have a question. They are all, my kids have great friends and they're all very open to talking to me when I ask them questions about, you know, anything that really involves them in the schools. I do really appreciate their input, I think it's important. And they are the heart of this community and we are raising these kids to be our future. And I think listening to them and pushing for what they want while supporting them is one of the best things that we can do as a school board member. And I just can't express enough how wonderful of children we have in this community. And I really encourage you all to have a conversation with high school there if you have the opportunity because sometimes they're not all as steady as they can be.
So I want, I want student council to, to have a tight relationship with the board. The student council is the voice for the students. The, the students are the ones that, they're, they're out there on the quote-unquote front lines. They're the ones that are going through, you know, all these changes and all these, these different situations. If they feel that something is not going well, they should be able to come to the board and have an open communication. and have an open communication and an open dialogue so that the board can work on correcting these problems. I don't want this to be just a adult-only situation or conversation. I want the students to be just as well because they, they need to have their voices heard as well. Because, you know, when they, when they talk to their friends, word gets around, it spreads like fire, it gets to their parents, and it can either go really well or it can really go bad. So I want, I want there to be just an open communication if you have a skill set in the board.
Yeah, I think it's important that the, that the school board is accessible to the students, right? I mean, obviously if they have some opinions and some, some issue has come up, I think certainly their, their thoughts should take into consideration for making that, those kinds of decisions. So I think that's a good idea, that we can get involved, have the student council and the, and the board have some sort of online communication to, you know, have some kind of check-ins occasionally to make sure everything, make sure there's nothing the school board should know about, right? That hasn't turned its way back to the school board yet for the students.
Well, first, I, I wanna create the board as approachable because the student council does a great job, but it's all the other kids that might not want to go to the student council. I wanna be open and receive all kids' input. And then it's me as a board member, I can bring the issues that all the kids have and not just the kids that, that maybe they're scared, they don't wanna talk to the kids on the student council. I wanna be approachable because I'm unbiased and I wanna do what's best for all the kids in the school. So I believe every kid's opinion is valid and whatever we can do to make things better, because they live the day-to-day life. They're in school, they see the problems, the things that work, the things that don't work. And the board isn't here every day. And some kids might not wanna approach their principal or approach someone else, but I wanna be approachable so that we can get issues resolved and make things better here and more.
I've had timed out quite a few board meetings and the student council does already report into the school board pretty regularly. And so I, I do think that it's a good idea to provide a way for more students to approach the board. A lot of students, especially in Annalee's, get a little bit more nervous about talking in front of people, especially to a group of adults. And I'd like them to have opportunities to do that, but if we're really trying to solve the issues that they're dealing with, we need to also provide ways for them to approach the board, whether it's through emails or a suggestion box or something. But I think it's important that we allow them to approach the board. To include them, I think we should delegate tasks to them. And also, yeah, I just think we need to give them as many leadership opportunities as we can. I don't know exactly how to do that, but...
I agree with a lot of what, what's been said, incorporation of the student body into, if they're put into decisions, they're the reason we're here. And to not listen to them would be foolish, in my opinion. I think finding ways, we have to be accessible to them, to not be intimidating if you're a board member. Being at games, maybe taking the initiative to get out there and talk to the students opposed to waiting for them to come to you. Make yourself accessible, go talk to the students, see what their issues are. You might be surprised at what you learn.
What do you think the role and responsibilities are at the school board in creating a culture of equity for all students and staff, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, gender identity, ability or sexual orientation? Start with Dakota.
The board needs to, to make sure that, that students along backgrounds have a safe place to go to school. You know, all, all of those things, the race, religion, ethnicity, gender identity, ability or sexual orientation. Those, those things should not deter a student from having the education that they need and being, being able to get that education on a safe, you know, safe way. Whether it's, you know, creating policies, reviewing the policies to make sure that, that it's a level playing field, making sure that one, one group is not... By the way, say, one, one group isn't being looked at firmly enough or maybe not getting enough awareness. This way, everybody... Everybody's already... Bottom line is just making sure that they can get to school safely and there's no problems.
Yeah, the, the school obviously wants to foster an environment where everyone feels welcome, right? Whatever their background is, they feel comfortable at school. Somebody makes them comfortable with, I mean, a faculty member or other students. So I think it's, it's important that we're doing that. I know the school, I mean, particularly with like gender identity and sexual orientation. Like, there's United, I mean, LGBT Q Club that I think has, has really large attendance. I mean, even, even, uh, LGBT Q plus students attend. So I think the school does a good job of making their review welcome. I mean, obviously, it's always a sensitive area for staff and things of that nature. I think the school does a good job of making sure that all students feel comfortable here. So if you can, any ground right for share?
Well, I believe the rule, that the school board is to develop the policies and the procedures for all the staff and the students to follow. If there's, everything's not always black and white, but if there's policies and procedures to follow, then there's no gray area. The staff knows how to treat certain situations if they arise. The students know that what's right and what's wrong and they're held accountable if they are bullying or if they're, if they're making racial remarks or anything like that. So I believe that, that's the rule of the school board, is to develop these policies and make sure that administration is enforcing these rules throughout the, throughout the schools, K through twelve.
School boards set policies and procedures and make sure that they're enforced and make sure that they're also, your policies and procedures follow any laws that exist out there. It's really important. It's really... It's, it's really important that our environment, our education environment is welcoming to everybody. Like, everybody. So whether you are, whatever race you are, everybody should be able to feel welcomed. And there needs to be, across the board, there needs to be, even, like, everybody needs to know what the expectations are. If, if you do this, this is what we're gonna do and we're gonna react the same way no matter who it is that is taking care of the situation.
So why do you points on this? Maybe I'll sound kind of harsh here. Take a look around you right now. Our community is vastly Caucasian. If you're that kid that's by himself, he's already, he or she is already feeling alone. To me, yep, the board makes policies that we're supposed to follow. Teachers, administration are supposed to enforce those policies. I think a big part of it falls on that when a kid's being singled out for whatever the reason. I think it's very difficult for some people who may have not grown up in a culturally diverse community to deal with that or know how to talk about it or it's uncomfortable. And if that's the case for even that teacher or parent or administrator to ask for help, hey, what can we do differently to encourage this environment to be better? That's what I think needs to happen.
So the role, as, as, you know, we talked about and most of you know, the role, roles and responsibilities of the school board is, is those policies. However, I also think it is a role for to ensure that the staff feels supported with their students, that the administration feels supported with the students, and that the students feel supported. I think that having that healthy and safe environment for them to come to is one of the most important things that we can provide for our kids. I also know that more is becoming, you know, we are vastly Caucasian, as Steve said, but we are having that increase in cultural diversity, which is going to, you know, engage our kids more. And so it's our responsibility too as a parent to teach them how to engage in that situation, in those situations, and have the school be involved. I really think that the main goal of this, or the main, the main responsibility is to make sure that all students feel supported and accepted. And I also want to make sure that their mental health feels supported as well.
This is the final question. What are your personal strengths that would make you a good candidate for the school board and why should we vote for you? Starting with Grant.
Uh, yeah, I think my, my very strength that comes to the school board is, I mean, I, I come from a background, professionally in my sort of finance industry, so I'm aligned for that sort of thing. I, I've worked with, some, worked on some school board financial stuff in the past and professionally. So, you know, I, I know we're not a wealthy school district, right? So that's, that's why I'm obviously very mindful, uh, here especially. But also, I think I'm very accountable and very open-minded and not any preconceived sort of notions about various sort of topics, right? I think I really just, I wanna do what's best for our kids and our staff to create the issue process the best that, best that you can do. Thank you.
Well, I guess some of my strengths are, I, I like researching. I don't like making rash decisions and quick decisions. I believe that everyone's entitled to their opinions, but compromise is always best to do what's best for the community and the school and the students and the faculty. That, that's what's, the, the reason we're all here, is to do that. And I would just like to thank the five other candidates for stepping up and wanting to take on this role, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I think my personal strengths would be my life experiences with raising kids and working with children and kids in teaching them. Also, my view of that education is so important. My ability to give time and my ability to serve the community as a school board member. My ability to listen and to navigate different personality types and to connect with people and to figure out how we can best help them and provide solutions for them. Yes, and I too am very thankful that there's so many different people running. I'm looking forward to working, hopefully I get to work with some of you.
For me, I would say my strengths are honesty and transparency. Steve, I'm, I'm not here to police everybody and you may not like a decision I make or the way I vote on a topic. That's okay, everybody's on top of their opinion. I can take the feedback and I can learn from it. Even if I make the wrong decision, I'm willing to learn, I'm willing to be open-minded about different situations, different viewpoints that people might have. And I think taking in that feedback and learning from it, and I know I'll have a lot to learn if I can get elected and figuring things out, looking at budgets and everything. But I'm willing to do it. And I honestly feel bad for the voters because I think there's a lot of good candidates and that's gonna be tough decisions for you guys to make.
So one of my personal strengths would be that I'm a good listener. I feel like I'm really able to listen to what people have to say, not only the students, the parents, the teachers, the community members. I also really enjoy serving our community, as I stated earlier, working for the county. It's one of my passions. I also am enthusiastic. I really love helping people. I feel like I'm trustworthy, I am open-minded, and I'm really excited for this potential opportunity. I think it is great and as the other candidates have said, we have five people, five other people up here that will do a great job. So I wanted to also take the opportunity to thank you guys. And also thank you guys here for showing up, showing that you care. And thank you all for watching at home who haven't been able to be here. It's a really wonderful community to have this opportunity to support and I really look forward to possibly working with you all in the future.
So I would say some of my personal strengths are being team-oriented and goal-driven. Working with the board and working through a council's goals that best benefit more public schools. You know, I'm a guy that is very transparent, is very honest and accountable. If, if I make a mistake, I'm going to own up to it. I, I look at decisions not based off of personal opinion or bias but off of logic and self-reasoning. And sometimes there's gonna be decisions made that people are not going to like, but we have to be able to live with those decisions and I can live with those decisions. And, you know, if, if more, if more public schools can put up with a guy like me from K through twelve all these years, you know, God bless him because I, I think, I think I can help, help serve this, help serve this school district being a community, God myself, and using the experiences that I have had with other community organizations. So I say in a lot of time, but I just wanna say thank you to the other candidates for stepping up, doing what a lot of people wanna do but yet don't do. So thank you all guys for coming together tonight.
That concludes tonight's forum. Thank you to our student council members who are here tonight. Please stand if you are in student council. We also want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.